As Mayor of the City of Stanton, I call the June 24th, 2021 Work Session Meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is a consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda as presented.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Councilman Claffey is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is Item Two on the Work Session Agenda and Item A on the Regular Meeting Agenda. It's a discussion of ordinance to amend the FY 2022 Budget Ordinance for the City of Stanton by adding Budget Amendment Number One. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Phil Treier, the city's Chief Finance Officer, will present this item.
Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of councils, a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we are here to introduce Budget Amendment Number One for FY 22. We started early. Budget Amendment Number One totals $7,70360 and is broken out between the cities and schools as follows. City portion of the amendment equals $7,646,134 and the school portion $54,226. Majority of Budget Amendment Number One is centered around the receipt of federal support via the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, by the City of Stanton, as well as $1.1 million in reserve funding from the Water Fund to repair the Clearwater Tank at the water treatment plant. Slide three. As mentioned in the previous slide, the city portion equals $7,646, includes the following. General fund appropriation of $6,543,777, includes $6,477,913 for the ARPA funds, $41,864 to appropriate additional state support and local match for the Office of the Registrar for Wages and Benefits, and $24,000 to break out the Reservoir Hill cellphone tower rental revenue from the T-Mobile billing invoice. Water Fund has $1,101,640, again, 1.1 for the repair of the Clearwell Tank, and $1,640 for the cellphone tower rental breakout. Sewer Fund, $372 for telephone. Environmental Fund, $251 for telephone. Stormwater Fund, $94 for telephone. And Education Fund Transfer, telephone, $4,226. Slide four provides a summary of the general fund appropriations discussed above by funding source. We have the ARPA appropriation of $6.5 million via federal funds. We have $41,864 in state and local appropriations for the additional state support and wages for the Department of Registrar. Breakout includes $33,926 from the state, $7,00938 from local sources. And finally, we do have the $24,000 to appropriate to break out of the cellphone tower rental income, which has historically been netted against the telephone invoice and is being broken out this year by T-Mobile. This represents a net change of zero to the city. Slide five, we have the appropriation of Clearwell Tank referenced above and the $1,600 and $1,640 to the telephone expense. The Education Fund appropriation, we have $50,000 for the additional school improvement grant to be used at the middle school, and $4,200 for the cellphone rental. So that completes the summary of the budget amendment. If there's any questions on that.
Are there any questions?
Vice Mayor Robertson. Yeah, thank you. Just clarifying, when you first, on page three, talked about the reservoir, it said $17,000, but is all the other added things as well?
Yes, exactly. Yep. Okay. Okay. Slide six, we begin a high-level review of the American Rescue Plan Act. I think we're going to be talking about a lot in the coming months. In April 2021, Slide seven, the U.S. Department of Treasury provided localities with estimated funding associated with the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. The City of Stanton is slated to receive allocations of $4,842,749 and $8,113,077 for both county and city funding, respectively. Stanton qualifies for county funding as the U.S. Census counted the City of Stanton within the county of Augusta for the allocation. Because local population counts are factored into the funding equation, the dollars received under county funding ensures the city receives an appropriate allocation of the ARPA funds. For the Treasury, 50% of the funds will be received in 2021 and 50% will be received in 2022. On May 25th, 2021, the Treasury Department issued a notice to the City of Stanton that the first half of the funding had been issued and sent to the city's account. The amounts received equal $2,421,734.50 and $4,056,838.50 for county and city funding, respectively. Again, this represents one half of the total allotment. The ARPA funds have been fronted. As such, the staff will continue to work with the auditors to ensure proper use of the funds. At the present time, the U.S. Treasury Department has issued interim final rules to guide localities on eligible expenses for these funds. Given the title interim final rules, we expect Treasury's interim interpretations to be refined, which will impact how we will be able to proceed with spending of the funds. There are five major categories in which the ARPA funds can be used. Interpretations of the eligible uses as of this date includes the following categories. Number one, support for the public health and economic impact. This category responds to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts and allows for assistance to households affected by the pandemic, small businesses and nonprofits, and impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. Two, premium pay for essential workers. This appears a couple times in the guidance. This category addresses workers performing essential tasks during the pandemic by providing premium pay to eligible workers. Compensation can be up to $13 per hour and is capped at $25,000 in total per employee for the entire program. Again, funds that are to be used for employees who have faced and continue to face the greatest health risk due to their service. Localities should, and they're encouraged, to prioritize low and moderate income employees. Three, payroll expenses for public health and safety employees. This too will appear multiple times in the guidance. ARPA will cover payroll expenses of public health and safety employees to the extent that the employees whose services are primarily or partially devoted to mitigating or responding to the pandemic. Employees that are predominantly devoted to these services can be assumed to be totally devoted to such activities. Four, replace local government loss of revenue. For this provision, local governments can reclaim lost revenue to the extent of the reduction in revenue lost due to the pandemic relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year prior to the emergency. That would be FY 19. This provision allows for a much broader use of funds, which includes infrastructure projects outside of water, stormwater, and broadband referenced below. Five, water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. These expenditures are to, are allowed to improve access to clean drinking water, invest in wastewater and stormwater infrastructure, and to provide unserved or underserved locations with new or expanded broadband access. Now, we're going to go into a little more deeper. Slide nine begins the outline of eligible uses under the category of public health and economic impacts. Under this category, we have 15 subcategories, which we will review now on a high level. There is a lot here. I have to warn you, the stuff is a little dry, dry, but you're going to need the information when you're considering the alternatives. And we're going to try to squeeze into 20 minutes the guidance right here. Okay? So here we go. The first subcategory, prevention and mitigation of COVID-19. Eligible uses include vaccination programs, medical expenses, testing, contact tracing, isolation or quarantine costs, personal protective equipment, support for vulnerable population to access medical or public health services, public health surveillance, monitoring for variances, variance, enforcement of public health orders, public communication efforts, enhancement of healthcare capacity, including alternative care facilities, support for prevention, mitigation, or other services in congregate living facilities and schools, enhancement of public health data systems, capital investments in public facilities to meet pandemic operational needs, ventilation improvements in key settings like healthcare facilities or other public facilities, and capital investments or adoptions to public facilities such as hospital or health clinics. Two, COVID-19 treatment and medical services. Funding can be used to enhance healthcare capacity and provide for both near and long-term needs of COVID-19 patients. Three, enhanced behavioral and mental health services. These expenses are targeted towards addressing behavioral healthcare needs exacerbated by the pandemic within the city. Covered expenses include mental health treatment, substance misuse treatment, other behavioral health services, hotlines or warm lines, crisis intervention, and services or outreach to promote access to health and social services. Four, support for local health and public safety workforce. Under this area, the employees are eligible to be provided for primarily, primarily or partially to mitigate the response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Eligible payroll expenditures and related benefits coincide with the level of duties assigned in response to mitigation of pandemic. Eligible employee categories include public health, public safety, healthcare, human services, and other similar employees. Fifth category, improving the design and execution of health and public health programs. Funding efforts in this area designed to improve programs addressing the COVID-19 public health emergency through planning and analysis. Expenses included in this area not limited to targeted consumer outreach, improvements to data or technology infrastructure, impact evaluation, and data analysis. Six, Item Six, addresses disparities and public health outcome. Under this item, Treasury will presume that certain types of services are eligible to be used when it's provided in a qualified census tract, QCT, and to families and populations living in the QTC. Qualified census tracts are areas where at least 50% of the households have incomes below 60% of the area median gross income or have a poverty rate of 25% or more. Expenses can be used for other households, businesses, or populations disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. Covered expenses include community health workers to help residents access health systems, public benefit navigators that can help residents navigate and apply for federal, state, and local public benefits or services, housing services that support healthy living environments, lead paint remediation, evidence-based community violence intervention programs, housing insecurity. Impacts on COVID-19 and education, including new or expanded learning services, assistance to high-poverty school districts, childhood health or welfare support. This includes childcare and home visits by health professionals. Slide 10. Slide 10, we continue. Under this category, negative economic impact. It includes Item Seven, assistance for impacted households, including food assistance, rent, mortgage, utility assistance, counseling and legal aid to prevent eviction or homelessness, cash assistance, emergency assistance for burials, home repairs, weatherization, or other needs, and internet access or digital literacy assistance. Item Eight, assistance to small business and nonprofits includes loans or grants to mitigate financial hardship to cover a decline in revenues resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. Funds can be used to support payroll, utility, and other operating costs. Loans granted in kind service. Under this area, the city can support implementation of COVID-19 prevention or mitigation measures. Includes physical plan changes, vaccine programs, testing and contact tracing programs. Finally, we have technical assistant counseling or other services to assist with local nonprofit businesses and their planning needs. Item Nine allows for aid to impacted industries. Under this area, funds can be used to support tourism, travel, hospitality, or other industries impacted by the pandemic. Covered expenses include implementation of COVID-19 mitigation and infection prevention measures to help safe resumption of business, improvements to ventilation, physical barriers and partition, signage to facilitate social distancing, provisions for masks and PPE, consultation to assist with infection prevention, activities that support the reopening of business, planned expansion or upgrade of tourism, travel, hospitality facilities that were delayed due to the pandemic, and finally, aid may be considered to respond to the negative economic impacts of the pandemic if it supports businesses, attractions, and business districts operating prior to the pandemic and affected by the required closure and other efforts to contain the pandemic. So that's pretty broad. Item 10, rehiring local government employees. This area allows local governments to rehire positions lost to the pandemic to a level that existed as of January 27th, 2020. Item 11 allows for assistance for unemployed workers. Eligible expenses include job training to accelerate rehiring of unemployed workers. These services may extend to workers unemployed due to the pandemic or resulting recession, workers who were already unemployed when the pandemic began or remain so due to the negative economic impacts of the pandemics, and the individuals who want and are available to work, including those who have looked for work sometime in the past 12 months or who are employed part-time but who want and are available to work full-time. Item 12, improbability of economic relief programs. Under this subcategory, we are allowed to use funds to improve efficiency of programs. Addressing negative economic impacts includes use of data analysis, targeted consumer outreach, improvements of data technology infrastructure, and impact evaluations. Item 13, services for qualified census tract and other disproportionately impacted communities. Again, this is the second time we've seen this. Under this area, they reference investments in housing in neighborhoods to address homelessness, affordable housing development, housing vouchers, residential counseling, and housing negative navigation assistance. Item 14, investments to address education disparities to include new, expanded, or enhanced early learning services, assistance to high-poverty schools, support for evidence-based educational service to address academic needs as well as social, emotional, and mental health needs. Item 15, promotion of healthy childhood environments. Eligible expenditures include new or expanded high-quality childcare, home visitation programs to provide assistance to pregnant women or families with young children, and enhanced services for child welfare involved families and foster youth. Okay. Slide 11 addresses the premium pay category. This, again, this is going to sound a little familiar. Under the ARPA program, workers performing essential tasks during the COVID-19 health emergency are eligible to receive premium pay. Compensation, again, $13 an hour, capped at $25,000 aggregate per employee for the length of the program. Funds are to be used for employees who have faced and continue to face the greatest health risk. Again, localities should prioritize low- to moderate-income persons, and we can provide these funds to third-party employers located within the city for these purposes. Eligible workers include any eligible work provided by an employee, estate, or local government, staff at nursing homes, hospitals, and home care settings, workers at farms, food production facilities, grocery stores, and restaurants, janitors and sanitation workers, truck drivers, transit staff, and warehouse workers, public health and safety staff, childcare workers, educators, and other school staff, social services and human service staff, and premium pay can be applied retroactively back to January 27th, 2020. Slide 12 reviews eligibility for localities to use the ARPA funds to cover payroll expenses for public health and safety employees. Under the ARPA program, localities can cover payroll expenses of public health and safety employees to the extent employee services are devoted to mitigating and responding to the COVID-19 emergency. For administrative convenience, employees that are predominantly devoted to these services can be assumed to be totally devoted to such activities. This is a different interpretation than CRF funds received in FY 20 and 21. Under CRF, localities could, out of administrative convenience, assume any public health or safety employees were 100% devoted to the response to the pandemic and its medication, thus making those expenses eligible. The National Association of Counties has provided an excellent comparison. Pretty much summarizes what I just said, so that's at the bottom of the slide. Slide 13 addresses the loss of revenue claim category. ARPA allows for localities to recapture general revenues lost as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. General revenues include taxes, current charges, miscellaneous general revenue, intergovernmental transfers between state and local governments, and parking. Utility revenues, and in our case, it's just water that's being defined, and revenue proceeds from the issuing of debt are expressly prohibited. Loss of revenues are calculated by the formula provided by the U.S. Treasury Department and measures actual revenue versus potential revenue. Under this formula, the greater the loss of revenue percentage above the base year or 4.1% is used. Under this calculation, the City of Stanton is estimated to be able to capture up to $3 million-plus in calculated loss revenue for calendar year, ending 12/31/2020. This calculation remains an estimate and has not been audited, so I'll put that disclaimer out there. Locations are allowed, localities are allowed to perform this calculation at 12/31/2020, 21, 22, and 23. Calculations stand on their own and are not cumulative. Slide 14 reviews the eligible uses under this category. Generally, we have a very broad latitude and use of these funds. The Treasury Department has expressly listed the following expenditures as eligible. Maintenance or pay-as-you-go funded building infrastructure, including roads. Modernization of cybersecurity, including hardware, software, and protection of critical infrastructure. Health services, environmental remediation, school and education services, and provisions for police, fire, and other public safety services. In addition, Brown Edwards has indicated that these funds can be used to support our upcoming budgets, general funds budget, given the revenue loss we have experienced, in fact, that factored into 22's budget. Finally, our auditors have also indicated the city can use the loss of funds to calculation to support projects within our most recent CIP. Slide 15 covers the investment in infrastructure. Under this category, the city has a broad latitude to fund improvements to existing infrastructure and water, sewer, stormwater, and broadband projects, clean water projects to improve water quality and address water pollution. Stormwater might fall under this. Drinking water projects to include insulation of failing treatment and distribution systems. Gardner Springs and the North River Pipeline come to mind. And broadband infrastructure for unserved and underserved households. Again, expenses must be obligated by 12/31/2024 and spent by 12/31/2026. Slide 16, we begin. Brief summary of the schools. Slide 17. Stanton City Schools have been awarded $6.2 million in federal fund to assist with the efforts of the COVID-19 pandemics. The funds must be obligated by September 30th, 2023, and spent by September 30th, 2024. The qualified schools must post a plan on its website for safe return to school for an in-person instruction and continuity of services. Prior to finalizing the plans, the schools must seek public comment on the proposed plan, and I believe the schools have just advertised a public hearing for this. Slide 18. 20% of these funds, 1.24 million, have been, must be used to address lowering loss through implementation of evidence-based interventions to respond to students' social, emotional, and academic impacts brought on by the pandemic. Special emphasis are to be on students who are in underrepresented groups. The remaining expenditures must fall under the guidance of the Individuals with Disability Act, Elementary-Secondary and Education Act, Adult Education Family Literacy Act, Perkins CTE, and expenditures designed to implement CDC recommendation. This includes social distancing, and I believe the schools are relying on this to assist with the middle school project. Again, the schools are relying on the language of the U.S. Department of Treasury for preparing and improving school facilities to reduce the risk of virus transmission and exposure to environmental health hazards. Brown Edwards has indicated that as long as the schools can provide a link which addresses the efforts of the COVID-19, and this is the case they are working on to improve the ability to social distance at the middle school, then SIR III funds can be used. VDOE has informally approved this concept, so the schools have kind of reached out already there. The schools are also relying on language found in the guidance for the development of a new website, which will become an all-inclusive information, education, emergency response hub for the school system. And finally, some flexibility. The Treasury allows for other activities that are necessary to maintain operation of and continuity of services, including continuing to employ existing staff or hiring of new staff. So this will give the schools some flexibility. I believe the schools intend to have a formal plan to utilize these funds. That's the community has had a chance to weigh in. And I know it was dry, and I'm sorry. I'll be happy to field any questions that you have. I will answer them to the best of my ability, and what I don't have an answer for, I will get back to you in short order.
Councilor Claffey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know if this should go to you, Phil, or City Manager Steve Rosenberg, but I know in March of 2020, all CIP projects were stopped when we hit the COVID crises and we stopped funding them and we ceased all activity. Is there any of these projects that we can bring back up and get started now based on we're going to have the money to pay for?
Most likely, but I will have to verify on a project-by-project basis. So I can't broadband say yes. I would have to go and speak with the auditors on a case-by-case basis because I don't want to make a misstep. There's just too much at stake.
All right. Also, anything that we already had on the CIP plan for this coming year, Garter Springs.
Yeah.
Well, what about the broadband project? Wasn't there a significant amount of money that was for the 9/11 up?
Yeah, there, yes, there is. The, looking over, IT, and IT's not there anymore.
He's way back.
Oh, there he is. Okay. Kurt, bail me out if need be. But Mr. Plowman has started the initial process in getting design work on that project. It's a $4 million project. We have $400,000 in CIP reserves right now. And yes, we do believe that these funds could absolutely be used for that. That was something we had had planned. Certainly, if we were to use, if we were to use these funds, that would give us budget capacity for other projects.
Yes. Which brings me to my next question.
Yes, sir.
Where is that going to go? I mean, you're obviously going to have some budget capacity because you're about to pick up some bonus money coming in here that we're going to be able to get a lot more projects done than we thought we were going to be able to get done.
Yeah, I think Mr. Rosenberg is going to come back to council, perhaps during the retreat, to kind of go through some of these areas and possibilities with you to try to get priorities that you might have, and then we'll tailor our plan based off of your priorities. Sir.
Harry Holmes, would we be able to use this money to knock out the shortage on our budget for this year?
Yes, absolutely.
Councilor Dole.
Harry, I couldn't hear your question, so I'm not sure what the answer means.
I just asked if, you know, we have a budget this year with a $320,000 shortcoming.
Yes.
And I was just asking if some of this money could be spent on that. And my answer was yes, I think.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. My question, or it's clarification. In the revenue loss, we can't count utility revenue, but we can count utility tax. but we can count utility tax. That was a point of clarification. I attended a webinar, and so if there's a tax on the utility, and you're losing that, so you can count that.
Okay, that's, that's a good point.
Not a huge amount of money, but it's something.
And I do appreciate that, because there's a lot here, and I'm reading it two and three times, and at some point, it starts losing effectiveness, so I have to go through this multiple times. Thank you.
I think it helps if you drink heavily while you're reading.
Perhaps.
Counselor Mead?
On page 10, item 13, services for qualified census tract and other disproportionately impacted communities. Qualified census tract, does that refer to the two census tracts in our West End? Are they talking about different census tracts?
I sat down with Mr. Vaughn, and I believe one of the two actually qualifies as a QCT. I can't give you the exact boundaries, but one of the two, Billy said that, Mr. Vaughn said that only one of the two, yes.
Counselor Claffey, did you have a follow-up?
Well, I was actually going to ask if we had any qualified census tracts, but that was handled. What about the rehiring of local government employees? I know, again, in March of 2020, we laid some employees off. Are there any of those positions that we need to?
Now, we have halted the freeze, and we have, we have brought back all of our initially laid-off employees to the extent that we can. Some people chose not to come back, and some positions may remain open because we're having trouble filling them like most people.
I agree. Yes. If I can just clarify, the hiring freeze will be rescinded as of July 1st. We're waiting for you to act this evening to terminate the local emergency that was declared, and tomorrow I'll be sending an email to the management team to inform them that the hiring freeze will be rescinded as of July 1st. And as Mr. Chair has indicated, as we've brought many programs back online, for, you know, for example, our part-time library employees and our part-time parks and rec employees who worked, you know, in some of the programs in that department, they were, they were terminated, involuntarily terminated at the onset, within six weeks, I believe, of the onset of the pandemic. But as those programs have been resumed, those positions have been advertised, and I think in most cases filled by the same employees who held them previously.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Counselor Dole and myself, we did attend the Virginia First Cities presentation, and others may have attended it, I just didn't catch her name. It was through Zoom. And one thing that they were really pushing is that for the different localities to have public hearings, to definitely have as many public hearings as possible to get input from the citizens.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number three, on the work session agenda, and item C on the regular meeting agenda, a discussion of municipal elections in November. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, John Blair, the city attorney, will present this item, and let me just say that if it requires the balance of the work session, I can cover item four during the regular meeting in its entirety.
Welcome, Mr. Blair.
Good evening, Mayor Oaks, counsel. Tonight, we discussed this General Assembly legislation earlier this year, but I just, to kind of go over the basics for everybody, because again, there's proposed to be an action item tonight. Stanton, like many cities and towns throughout Virginia, has been conducting its city councilor elections in May, and in this session of the General Assembly, there was legislation that mandates regardless of charter or of any local ordinance or the state law that was in effect, all councilor elections for cities and towns will be conducted in November, starting in 2022. And the legislation, which is called SB 1157, requires a local ordinance to implement the state mandate. And so tonight, during the action, or I should, I call it the action items, but it's the regular agenda action items, there is a proposal before you to have an ordinance that will move the Stanton City Council elections, beginning in 2022, from May to November, to coincide with the general elections. I think it is worth pointing out that this is a mandate from the state. They're really, I don't, I hate to, I hate to ever tell a governing body this, but there really isn't a lot of leeway here. It's a mandate from the state of Virginia. I did send an email to the School Board Council, Mr. Gwynne, and he informed me that he had informed the school board about this, because per state law, school board elections are held at the same time city council, or city council elections are held. And so with this ordinance, not only will city council elections be moved from May to November, but the school board elections will be moved from May to November. That's a very brief summary. I, well, I guess I should add one other thing. All of your terms are, per virtue of this legislation, extended for six months. And again, that was contemplated when the legislation was enacted at the state level. With that, I'm happy to take any questions that counsel may have.
Are there any questions? Counselor Holmes?
When would you have to sign up to run?
Yeah.
Yes, it's, the filing deadline would be in June of next year, I believe, because typically the filing deadline is for independent candidates for general election offices, which is generally the primary day, and I don't believe the state changed that, so whatever the primary date would be next year, and, well, let me, let me take that back. The state did make one change on that. I think the primary date now in Virginia is the second Tuesday in June, but this General Assembly moved that to the third Tuesday in June, and I think the purpose for that amendment was that some school systems were still open when that primary was being held in June, and so moving it an extra week, I think the intent was that there wouldn't be school in session when there was a primary election.
Right. Any additional questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The next item is item four on the work session agenda, and item D on the regular meeting agenda, a discussion of resolution ending the local emergency declared March 16, 2020. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have discussed this local emergency declaration on several occasions over the course of the past 16 months or so. It was often paired with a discussion of the uncodified emergency ordinance, which was allowed to expire in accordance with its terms several weeks ago now. This is the remaining action that was related to the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. I administratively declared a local emergency related to the pandemic in March of 2020, and shortly after that, that declaration was ratified by city council as required by the state code. We've maintained that local declaration ever since, and it requires action of city council in order to terminate the local emergency. As you may recall, the state declaration by the governor of Virginia is expected to expire on June 30th, and so consistent with that expected action by the state, we're ready to present this item to council for termination of the corresponding local emergency, and in order to cause that termination of the local emergency, council has before it a resolution for consideration, and it's a very simple resolution, and by its adoption, the local emergency here in the city of Stanton will be terminated, and we've provided for that termination to coincide with the termination of the state declaration, which is June 30th. So you would act on it this evening, but as provided in the resolution itself, it would be effective on June 30th of 2021. Thank you.
Any questions? All right, hearing none. The work session meeting is now adjourned. We will meet back at 7:30 for the regular meeting. As Mayor of the City of Stanton, I call the June 24th, 2021, regular meeting for the Stanton City Council to order. The first item on the business is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would care to do so, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the invocation moment of silence. And tonight, it is Councilor Steve Clappy's turn.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to ask my local priest to provide the invocation. He will be providing a Christian prayer if you wish to participate. I'd like to introduce Father Joseph Womala, who has been our priest here for the past 10 years. It is with a heavy heart I announce that Father Joe is leaving us after this weekend's service. The bishop has transferred him to Norfolk, to Christ the King Parish. The bishop knows a good thing when he sees it, and he knows what a good job Father Joe has done. Not only did he oversee the exterior repair of our church, but also Father Joe did a good job inside the walls. Father Joe.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Steve. May we pray. Dear Father Lord, we thank you for our beautiful city, and we thank you for our counselors here present. May we all work toward justice, peace, and love in all we do. Borrowing the words of St. Francis of Assisi, we say, "Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me so love; where there is injury, pardon; where there is doubt, faith; where there is despair, hope; where there is darkness, light; and where there is sadness, joy." O divine master, grant that I may not seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Womala.
The next item is the mayor's report, but before I go on any further, I just wanted to let everyone know that if you've been vaccinated, you do not have to wear a mask. If you have not, we would ask that you please wear a mask. We're not going to ask you if you've been vaccinated or not. If you prefer to wear a mask, either way, that's fine, that's your choice. There is a hand sanitizing station right outside the doors of the city council chambers, as well as sanitizing wipes at the podium. All right. One other item before I go on any further. I would like to announce that it is Councilor Steve Clappy's birthday today. Happy birthday. All right. So the first item under the mayor's report, I would like to read a proclamation. City of Stanton, Virginia proclamation, LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the Shenandoah LGBTQ Center. Whereas, our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, but the fulfillment of this promise has been long in coming for many Americans. And whereas, the historical riot at Stonewall in New York City on June 28th, 1969, is recognized as the beginning of the modern-day LGBTQ+ civil rights movement. And, as a result, for more than 50 years, June has been celebrated as LGBTQ+ Pride Month nationwide. And whereas, everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, and hatred based on race, ethnicity, religion, class, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, mental or physical disability, and to be supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas, the fabric of our community is strengthened by the values of inclusion, justice, diversity, acceptance, love, and kindness, not only during this month of remembrance, hatred and recognition, but throughout the year. And whereas, Stanton has a diverse LGBTQ+ community and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equity for all people in the community. And whereas, the Shenandoah LGBTQ Center for Stanton, Virginia, was established in July 2018 by Christopher Wood to address the unique challenges faced by the rural LGBTQ+ community, and is the community-based organization that strengthens this community through advocacy, education, programs, and safe spaces. And whereas, the center has served for more than 200 members of the community since inception, and continues to offer programs and support for individuals aged 14 through 65-plus on a confidential basis through all phases of their journey as an LGBTQ+ people. And whereas, consistent with the efforts of the center, the city of Stanton strives to be a community where everyone is celebrated for our differences, rather than being limited by what might divide us. Now therefore be it proclaimed by Stanton City Council that the entire month of June 2021 is hereby designated as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the city of Stanton. And the council honors the Shenandoah LGBTQ Center and its work to serve the LGBTQ+ community, encourages the citizens of Stanton to celebrate their diverse community, and joins our LGBTQ+ community in celebrating the resilience of LGBTQ+ people of all ages. Adopted this 24th day of June 2021, Andrea Oaks, Mayor. Is there anyone from the Shenandoah?
Mayor Oaks, I've invited Emily Sproul, who's Executive Director of the Shenandoah LGBTQ Center, and members of the board as well, Christopher Wood, Art Lewis, Phil Floyd, and there may be some more.
That's it for tonight. That's all.
One second.
I want to express our appreciation for this recognition of a month that celebrates so many people in the Stanton community. For many years, LGBTQ people have lived in the shadows, concealing these significant parts shadows, concealing these significant parts of their identities from employers, family members, and religious communities. We appreciate this opportunity to bring the fullness of their experiences into a positive light in public discourse. We also are glad to hear that council and the Stanton community will recognize that Pride is more than just a month on the calendar. The courage that is required for LGBTQ people to be authentically themselves is a courage that is called for daily in every interaction throughout our businesses, schools, and homes. We hope that this proclamation will signal a commitment on the part of Stanton City Council to continually work towards full equity and inclusion of LGBTQ people of all ages in our community. Lastly, I want to especially thank Councilperson Brenda Mead, who reached out to us about bringing this proclamation forward and spent time in thoughtful conversation with myself and others as to how best mark this important occasion and recognize the work that the Shenandoah LGBTQ Center has done and continues to do in this community. Thank you all very much for this proclamation.
Thank you.
My name is Christopher Wood, and I'm the founder of the Shenandoah LGBTQ Center. I am honored and humbled by the opportunity and the proclamation today. The entire City of Stanton has been an incredible environment, from the city manager to the captain of the police department, and everyone in between in my interaction. I am deeply humbled and honored to be a part of Stanton, to be a fabric of Stanton, to be a part of a community where my husband came out, where he grew up, and I'm just very thankful for your recognition and continued support of the LGBTQ community. And I look forward to having a very long and prosperous organization that supports the LGBTQ community, but also the allies that continue to support us. So thank you so much, and I appreciate your time today.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. We should love one another here in Stanton. We should try to support one another and lift each other up. So, thank you. All right. I have another proclamation. It's the Juneteenth Independence Day for June 19th, 1865 proclamation. City of Stanton, Virginia proclamation, Juneteenth Day, June 19th, 1865. Whereas, President Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation was issued January 1, 1863. And whereas, news of the end of slavery did not reach the frontier areas of the United States, and in particular, the southwest states, for over two and a half years. And whereas, on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas with news that the Civil War had ended, and that 250,000 enslaved African Americans were free. And whereas, African Americans who had been slaves in the southwest celebrated June 19th, commonly known as Juneteenth Independence Day, as inspiration and encouragement for future generations. And whereas, Juneteenth also serves as a reminder of the work yet to come that will be necessary in order to ensure a more equitable world for future generations. And whereas, Juneteenth became a Virginia state holiday effective June 2021 under Governor Ralph Northam, and it was made a federal holiday on June 17th, 2021 by President Joe Biden. And whereas, Stanton City Council recognizes that the observance, the end of slavery, is a part of the history and heritage of the United States, and acknowledges the historical significance of Juneteenth Independence Day. Now therefore be it proclaimed by Stanton City Council that June 19th, 2021 is hereby recognized as Juneteenth Independence Day in the City of Stanton, and council encourages all residents to join this year and in future years to celebrate the solidarity, and urges all residents to actively raise their own awareness of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and city. Adopted this 24th day of June 2021, Andrea Oaks, Mayor. All right.
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor Mead.
I've invited Sheila Amati, who is Chair of the Shenandoah Valley Juneteenth Celebration Committee, to speak.
Good evening, Mayor Oaks and City Council. I thank you for the gesture to acknowledge Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, in the African-American community. I was overjoyed when Juneteenth was made a state holiday by Governor Northam in June 2021, and more than happy when President Biden signed legislation on June 17th, 2021, for it to become a federal holiday. I was surprised and happy when Councilwoman Brenda Mead contacted me on June 18th to propose issuing a Juneteenth proclamation at this city council meeting to honor the national holiday and also the work the Shenandoah Valley Juneteenth Celebration Committee has done for five years to make it a great celebration in Stanton. She asked if I could assemble the group together to come to the city council meeting, and I readily agreed. I thank Brenda for her kindness and her genuineness. I told her that I would be honored to bring everyone together for this acknowledgement. She later asked me to send her the history on Juneteenth I shared at the Frontier Cultural Museum on Juneteenth Freedom Day, and I sent it to her. One key thing I shared was the importance to know history for oneself. I stated it's incumbent upon each of us to not take what someone says, but to be able to know for yourself. There appears to have been changes to the original Juneteenth proclamation plan proposed by Councilwoman Mead. This leaves me a bit perplexed and here to speak to the errors in the current proclamation and what I take exception to. Error one, proclamation. At the top of the proclamation page, it said Juneteenth Independence Day, June 19th, 1865. In the African-American community, Juneteenth is known as Freedom Day, not Independence Day. It is distinguished from July 4th, known as Independence Day, which African-Americans do not acknowledge as our Independence Day. Error two, paragraph two states, whereas news of the end of slavery did not reach the frontier areas of the United States, and in particular, the southwestern states, for over 25 years. This is not accurate. The end of enslavement occurred in the South, in Texas, and the other southern Confederate states of South Carolina, Mississippi, Florida, Alabama, Georgia, Louisiana, Virginia, Arkansas, Tennessee, and North Carolina. Error three, paragraph three states in part, whereas the Civil War had ended and 250,000 enslaved Americans were freed. Error, a more accurate account by PBS and other reliable sources state that at the end of the Civil War, 4 million African-Americans were freed. Error four, paragraph four states, whereas African-Americans who had been slaves in the southwest celebrated June 19th, commonly known as Juneteenth Independence Day, as inspiration and encouragement for further generations. This is an error. Again, Juneteenth is not commonly referred to as Independence Day. It should be stated Juneteenth Freedom Day. An inspiration and encouragement for future generations. This can be worded with a semblance of authenticity. It was a sobering time of acknowledging what the Emancipation Proclamation proclaimed on paper. However, knowing unequal rights, discrimination, poverty, lynchings, and other gross inequities in every aspect of life for African-Americans continued for a century after emancipation. It was only with the Civil Rights Act of 1964 that outlawed discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, national origin, and later sexual orientation and gender identity that acted as a source of inspiration and encouragement for future generations. Error five, paragraph eight states, whereas Stanton City Council recognizes that the observance of the end of slavery is a part of the history and heritage of the United States, and acknowledges the historical significance of Juneteenth Independence Day. Error, again, Juneteenth is commonly referred in the African-American community as Freedom Day, not Independence Day. Now therefore be it proclaimed by Stanton City Council that June 19th, 2021 is hereby recognized as Juneteenth Independence Day error. I say again, Juneteenth Freedom Day. Correct. Mayor Oaks, I thank you for the Juneteenth proclamation gesture, but personally, we cannot accept it due to the many inaccuracies. Errors by omission and commission have been the history of African-Americans and ones we will address at every opportunity.
Ms. Armani, I will make sure that the city staff reaches out to you to make the proper corrections. But thank you for coming down and being recognized. Juneteenth has been celebrated for many years in Stanton. The event that was held to honor Juneteenth at the Frontier Cultural Museum was just a well-run and just a phenomenal event. I thoroughly enjoyed it, and so thank you. Thank you for the invite. A couple of years ago, I participated in a fashion show for Juneteenth, and Mr. Billy Vaughn was also in the fashion show, and he looked, oh, he looked quite dapper. I think he stole the show. Just absolutely a lot of fun, and we need to continue to honor and appreciate Juneteenth. So we will make the proper corrections. So thank you. All right, let's see the next item. I did want to mention that the July 4th celebration this year will be virtual. The Happy Birthday America group will have their activities virtual this year. But please feel free to gather with your family, celebrate America, and enjoy your friends and family. I wanted to mention that this Saturday, from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. at the Gypsy Hill Park Gymnasium, there will be a celebration for Alfonso Hamilton. June 26th would have been his birthday, and that day was declared the Alfonso Hamilton Day last year. So his church and his family will be having a big birthday bash. So please come on out and have some cake, and let's honor the wonderful memory of Alfonso Hamilton. Also on my list, I have quite a bit, so if you can bear with me. I mentioned earlier the Virginia First Cities had a Zoom meeting, and Counselor Dole and myself attended, and if other members attended, I just didn't see your name, so forgive me for overlooking the fact that you may have attended. But the Virginia Municipal League, Jim Regenball, he went over the American Rescue Plan spending, and he broke it down. I don't know if Counselor Dole wants to make a few comments under additional items from council members, since she's our numbers person. But it was encouraging, and it showed that through the American Recovery Act, we're going to make it through. We're going to see the light at the end of this tunnel with the pandemic, and we're going to make it through. I was asked to inform everyone that Woodrow Wilson was not able to throw out the first pitch for the Stanton Braves the other day due to weather. So Woodrow Wilson will try again. He's going to be throwing out the first pitch for the Stanton Braves game on July 1st, 7:30 p.m. So if you want to go down to watch Woodrow Wilson throw out the pitch, that sounds like fun. And I have one more item concerning the Stanton Fire Department. Oh, and I did want to mention to the council members, I asked Mrs. Zinni to print off the Virginia's budget and the American Rescue Plan, the PowerPoints that were shown during the Zoom meeting. There's two different ones. They're at your seat. And this is a lot of valuable information that will coincide with the presentation that Phil Treyor gave us during the work session. 2020 Governor's Fire Service Award. On June 4th, Governor Ralph Northam announced the recipients of the 2020 Governor's Fire Service Awards. Established in 2002, the Governor's Fire Service Awards honor excellence in Virginia's fire services. For outstanding fire department response, the recipient was the City of Stanton Fire and Rescue. On the evening of Saturday, August 8th, 2020, the City of Stanton Fire and Rescue embarked on an unprecedented night of responses that required the city's fire service to perform heroic swift water rescues and fire suppression, at the same time while a series of intense and quick-moving isolated rainstorms passed through the city of Stanton. These storms resulted in a historic flooding event, and by August 9th, 2020, Stanton Fire and Rescue had responded to more than 89 emergency incidents that included 21 water rescue calls, rescuing victims from stranded vehicles, and battled a large structural fire that broke out in the downtown area. Chief Glenn A. Gaines Leadership Award was given to Chief Scott Garber. In addition, this past spring, Fire and Rescue Chief Scott Garber was honored by the Virginia Fire Chiefs Association with the Chief Glenn A. Gaines Leadership Legacy Award, nominated by members of Stanton Fire and Rescue. The nomination speaks of Chief Garber's dedication to the projection of citizens, visitors, infrastructure, and the department and the mentorship and leadership he exhibits. One prominent example of his mentorship in affording his staff the opportunity to grow, learn, and try new things is the department's Firefighters for Literacy Elementary Incentive Reading Program that started in 2019. This program started by a department lieutenant. This program started by a department lieutenant features weekly visits into classrooms and monthly prizes to help motivate students. To quote directly from the nomination, Chief Garber's community service approach, ethical mindset, and natural mentoring nature provides the leadership qualities that makes our department a sought-after place to work. He is certainly a role model for future leaders of the fire service. So I just wanted to say congratulations to the Stanton Fire Department, and congratulations to the Fire Chief, Fire Chief Scott Garber, for excellent service to the community. Mr. Rosenberg, please extend our congratulations to the Stanton Fire Department.
You're welcome.
I might help if I put my glasses on. All right. That is it for me. The next item is additional items by members of council. Are there any additional items by members of council? Counselor Dole.
Well, I could make your eyes glaze over with the numbers, but what I will tell everyone is, we have not, well, if you're my age or thereabouts, in my life- is, we have not, well, if you're my age or thereabouts, in, in my lifetime, there has not been the opportunities that are going to be available to us. Nothing comes close, because we've got these ARPA funds coming, and we've got 12 million plus, the school's got 6 million plus. The state has, is going to, is projected to have a $2 billion with a B surplus at the end of the fiscal year. And then they're getting ARPA money. And so it's an opportunity for us to make good plans and do things that we couldn't have done before. And I, and you know, there's infrastructure projects that have been sitting unfunded for years. So I'm really encouraged that we can like put a dent in some of those with, with this money. So, so that's, that's basically it. I mean, you know, Senator Kane said when he visited here that we need to think big. And so let's not, well, I won't say what I was going to say. Let's not peddle it away on stupid stuff. Let's do good stuff with this money, because it's an opportunity that we wouldn't have had otherwise. And the only other comment I'll make is that contrary to what the newspaper said, I, I was at Juneteenth, and it was awesome, and thank you Sheila for coordinating that as you have, you know, for years. My only disappointment, I had my heart set on collard greens, and nobody had any for sale. I couldn't believe it, but you know, maybe next year, can you, can I put an order in Well, okay, there you go. Thanks so much. That, that's it for me.
Right. Any other council members?
Mayor Oaks?
Counselor Mead?
Before the pandemic started, I was doing, doing something that I really enjoyed pretty much every day through a letter to city council, or a Facebook post, or a newspaper article. The names of folks I didn't know in Stanton would, would come before me. And so I'd, I'd call them up, or I'd send them an email, or a Facebook message, or a text, or whatever, and invite them to have a cup of coffee with me. And I was doing that pretty much every day, so about five days a week. So I was really pleased once we, we opened back up again to be able to continue to do that. And so I've had, I've had cups of coffee with 30 citizens in the last month. I'm going to have to switch to decaf, because sometimes that's twice a day, and, and that's not good for me. But, uh, so I have enjoyed getting back to that habit of doing that. I've met a lot of great people, and there are people who have disagreed with me, people who have agreed with me, people who I don't know what their feelings are about things, but, but we've had an opportunity to, to talk and get to know one another. So I've enjoyed doing that. And I also conducted my first of what I hope will be many town hall meetings. On June 15th, I did the meeting via Zoom. It's, uh, seems to be the most efficient way and the convenient way to get folks together. And, you know, at that time of the evening, so we had couples in their living rooms, and we had, uh, we, we had people of all ages in the room, so to speak. And, uh, and, and the, the town hall meeting was for the purpose of getting citizen feedback on the school board's issues at Shelburne Middle School and the thoughts about Stanton Crossing. And I, I learned a lot and heard from a lot of people, and so I appreciated that attendance. That's it.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of June 10th, 2021. Counselor Claffey?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the work session and regular minute, meeting, regular meeting minutes of the June 10th, 2021 meeting.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Vice Mayor Robertson has seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That takes us to the regular meeting. Item A, an introduction and public hearing of ordinance to amend the FY 2022 budget ordinance for the City of Stanton by adding budget amendment number one. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Phil Trayer, the city's chief finance officer, will present this item. Before he begins, let me just note a procedural issue after Mr. Trayer's presentation. As indicated in the memo, there's a motion to be considered by council to introduce the ordinance and to conduct the public hearing. So you'll want to entertain that motion, vote on it, and then open the public hearing.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a pleasure to be back. Tonight, we are here to introduce budget amendment number one for FY 2022. Budget amendment number one totals $7,700,360 and does require a public hearing, which was properly advertised and is scheduled for this evening. The breakout of budget amendment number one includes the city portion, $7,646,134, and the school portion, $54,226. Details have been summarized in your packet and were reviewed during this evening's work session. Budget amendment number one includes the following: $6,543,777 in general fund provisions, which is made up of $6,477,913 for ARPA funds, $41,864 to appropriate additional state support and local match for the Office of the Register for wages and benefits, and $24,000 to break out the reservoir hill cellphone tower rental income from the T-Mobile billing invoice. We have $1,101,640 in the water fund appropriates, 1.1 million for the clear water tank repairs, and $4,266 for telephone expense appropriation. We have $372 in dollars in the sewer fund to appropriate additional telephone expenditures, $251 environmental fund for telephone expenditures, $94 in stormwater for telephone expenditures, and $54,226 in the education fund, which appropriates the school improvement grant of $50,000, and $4,266 for telephone expenditures. The city manager recommends the introduction of this budget amendment as presented, and for council to conduct a public hearing, which is scheduled for the evening.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Trayer? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I move to introduce an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 budget by adding budget amendment number one totaling $7,700,360, and that council conduct a public hearing of the ordinance.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second, just Terry Holmes.
All right. Counselor Holmes is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now I will open up the public hearing. I'll bang the gavel. If you are for this item, please feel free to come to the podium and state your concerns or your support. If you're against it, again, please come to the podium. You have five minutes to speak, and if you can, please give your name and your address. With that, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone like to come to the podium? All right. Hearing none. Last chance. Public hearing is now closed. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trayer. Okay, the next item is item B, a consideration, city council procedure memorandum, an amendment to city, Stanton City Code, Section 2.10.120. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, City Attorney John Blair will present this item.
Welcome back, Mr. Blair.
Good evening again, Mayor Oaks and council. It's a pleasure to be here. I did want to clarify, at the last city council meeting, there were a couple of questions that I think need some, need to be answered. Ms. Dole, or Counselor Dole, one of your questions was, does the city charter have anything to say about abstaining from votes? I said at the time, I didn't think it did, but wanted to confirm that, and it does not. The other issue that I'd like to, before getting into any of the other substance, to clarify from the previous meeting, was proposed policy, proposed council memorandum number 16 concerning the Freedom of Information Act. And what I would like to point out there, there was some discussion about public business, public records, text messages, and the like. And after the meeting on June 10th, I made a couple of changes based on the discussion. In section four of that memorandum, you will see the, the definition of public business. We had talked about last time, we needed that definition in this memorandum. And it says, "Public business encompasses those matters over which the Stanton City Council has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power." So that's, you know, when we talk about public records, public records are records formed for the transaction of public business. So that's what public business is. And there was also a discussion about emails, text messages, and the like. And what I've done to clarify is in section one, for the purposes of complying with FOIA requests for council member public records. And public records encompasses emails, or text messages, or any other form of communication about the transaction of public business. And, and I think that's important, because there was a question about just purely text messages. Well, all text messages that any of you have on your phones are not subject to FOIA, not all of them. It is only those text messages in which you discuss public business. And I think, and, and I, I don't want to speak for anybody, but I think there was some confusion at the last meeting about, you know, their, their, FOIA can be complicated, because for instance, when I say emails, I have a Gmail account, and, and if you said all your emails are subject to FOIA, that's not a completely accurate statement. All my emails that deal with the transaction of public business on that account are subject to FOIA, but emails to my wife about what we're going to have for dinner, for instance, are not subject to FOIA. And so I know there were questions at the last meeting about text messages, emails, and the like. I have taken, and the depth, the Freedom of Information Act defines public records, and it's in section one. And public records are any of your records that relate to the transaction of public business. But again, it doesn't mean all your records, and I think that's an important distinction to make. Very briefly, we've gone through two meetings on these, and just want to point out just some highlights of the proposed changes that you will consider tonight. And then I finally want to get to an issue about the change in state law. When you take a look at the ordinance, as well as council procedure memorandum number six, Counselor Mead, at the last meeting, you had brought up the idea about, well, what if I feel like I have an appearance of a conflict of interest? And vote, and then I think the rest of the council agreed that if you felt like you had the appearance of a conflict of interest, you should state that appearance for the record, and then you could abstain from the vote without any additional vote from council. So procedure memorandum six and the proposed ordinance now include that you can abstain if you feel like you have the appearance of a conflict of interest, but you must state that for the record for the clerk to record in the minutes, so that if the public has a question about why you abstained from a vote, it will be in that, in those minutes. You know, I can go through all of these memorandum by memorandum. But a few of these, I think, for instance, number five and 15, they've been amended, they're proposed amendments, which basically indicate the city manager is going to come to you during the business portion of your regular meetings to discuss all grants. And so these, these memoranda are, the proposed amendments reflect that, that the city manager will in fact come before you, whether it involves city funds or not, and if not, it'll be during the city manager's remarks to inform the council. So council procedure memorandum two, this was about the nominations committee. This does say the clerk will inform all applicants that their applications have been received. It also states that all counselors will receive a copy of all applications for boards and commissions. And it also clarifies the roles of council liaisons. And I know that had been a topic of discussion, but there is, that actually is not in the current policy. It's been a practice, but this does put it in the policy. Number three, council memorandum three, the mayor had asked, and the council agreed, that during the invocation mo, or moment of silence, if a counselor wanted to defer to another council member, they could do so, but that that counselor loses their spot in the rotation. And also that clarifies that when a counselor proposes an agenda item, it will first, the city manager will first put it on the next work session agenda that's available. Council procedure memorandum number four allows for public participation via Zoom. It also clarifies, and again, this wasn't in the current procedure, it clarifies matters from the public is a part of individuals who address council. And it states that public hearings, each speaker will be provided five minutes, and at matters from the public, each speaker will be provided three minutes. There is no cap on the amount of speakers per the consensus at the last council meeting. It's also worth pointing out, one of the proposed changes makes it clear that when you have a land use applicant, they are actually not part of the public hearing, they're separate from that public hearing. And again, that's to be clear, that you can ask questions of the applicant. So that's, that's part of that clarification. We've gone over number six, number 12. This would require that the mayor, under the $250 spending authority, would report to council any expenditure under that authority. Number 14, I believe Counselor Dole had talked about the idea of removing the two years for a deceased individual before a city facility could be named after them. There seemed to be a majority consensus for that at the, when this was discussed. Number 16, we've talked about with FOIA. Number 17 is, again, that was a housekeeping item to let all of you know about your meeting procedures in general, both special and regular meetings. And then there has been a change that's in effect on July 1st of this year in state law, and I've wanted to, you, you will have those before your consideration tonight, but wanted to ask, the state law is changing for counselor remote participation, and it is up to each public body whether they want to incorporate these changes or not. But you do have the ability, I want to first go over, because the state law provides a number, but I don't think that's going to be accurate for you. Or it will be, it will be such a moving target, it would be almost impossible to implement, so I have a, a solution. Currently, if, if a public body desires, you may allow a counselor to participate remotely in meetings for two meetings per calendar year. The state is allowing, if you choose, you do not have to go this route, but this is your policy choice, to allow counselors to participate in up to 25% of meetings per calendar year for a personal reason, you can participate remotely. Why I think that's a little bit difficult is it doesn't say regular meetings, it says meetings. And you all know, you, for instance, last week, you have different types of meetings that occur during the year that you don't anticipate. You have interviews and things. So what I was, if there's any interest in that, what my proposal would be is this. Typically, per your schedules, and that's been adopted and in years past, you don't have a meeting in November or in December, you only have one meeting in those months. And you have one meeting typically during one of the months in the summer, which this, this year will be July. So typically in a year, you have 21 meetings. So and that doesn't include all the special meetings, but the reason that that would be impossible is the clerk and staff have to, you start a calendar year, and it progresses, right? And so you never, that, that 25% becomes just this moving target. I would propose perhaps 25% of the 21 meetings you normally have, if somebody's interested, which would be five, five meetings per year, if there's any interest in council in doing that for the personal meeting exception. The other change that the state is going to permit you to have beginning July first is, as you know, medical reasons, counselors themselves can miss an unlimited amount of meetings per your policy. The state is saying that in addition to a counselor's medical condition, or temporary or permanent disability, a family member's medical condition could qualify to allow a member to participate remotely. So I think if, if you don't mind, first I'd like to ask if there are any questions about the proposed memorandum or ordinance, and then get into any possible changes based on this state law change.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Yes, I would like to see us do 25% just because, you know, if we're going on vacations or now that would, that could be your, your meetings right there spent for, unless you were sick or something. So I think having it at 25% gives us the opportunity to, you know, to, if we ever get a chance to go on vacation, we could.
Hi, Mayor Robertson.
Carrie, I mean, so, I mean, he was saying 25% is five meetings. Are you, you're not agreeing with the five, or?
No, no, I think it, we should go with the
Oh, okay.
Five meetings. But not the, not special meetings and stuff like that.
Right.
I think they should be included.
Should be included.
Gotcha, okay. Any other comments or questions concerning this memorandum?
I can, I can, if, if the council's consensus at your next meeting have that, that change, if that's your consensus, does, how do people feel about a family member's medical condition being a reason to to participate remotely?
What is the council's pleasure?
Well, I mean, yeah, you're saying like if, if the wife or the husband or child, you're there to care for them, so.
Yeah. Okay. Looks like there's a consensus, yes.
Okay. And I will have that at your next meeting. And then, again, any questions you have about tonight's items, the proposed amendments to the memorandum or the ordinance?
Are there any questions? Okay, I actually need to say something. I've been given a lot of thought to Procedure Memorandum Number Four, and that's the procedure that deals with matters from the public. And in light of recent events, and the value of listening to our citizens, I believe is most important. I know that we have it spelt out right now to be voted on to take it to three minutes, from five to three. But I want the citizens to know that I've heard you, I've been listening. I ran on a platform to listen to the citizens. And I've done just that. I've listened to my fellow council members. In our budget, beginning, if you look at it, it says citizens of Stanton. That means you have the top authority. Then it's city council, and then it's staff. We on city council do not work for vendors, we do not work for outside agencies, we do not work for the staff, we work for the citizens. And I plan to hold true to my platform when I said I will listen to the citizens because we work for you. Now, it was mentioned at the last meeting that if we need to be here till 2:00 AM, then so be it. That's our job. And that's what we signed up for. It was mentioned that the way we used to do it was working fine. Well, I say we open it up even more. We have the remote participation through Zoom. It was mentioned with the idea of having it at the beginning and the end of the meeting. When I served on the school board, we had matters from the public at the beginning of the meeting and the end of the meeting, five minutes a person. There was no time limit as far as an overall time limit. There was no set number of how many people could speak. It was never an issue. We always got out in a reasonable amount of time. So again, with a lot of thought put into this, and in light of recent events, I believe that the city council should allow five minutes per individual. I believe we should not have an overall limit as far as numbers or time. I believe that we should have matters from the public at the beginning of the meeting, after the invocation moment of silence. I believe we should have it again at the end of the meeting, after matters from the city manager. We show consideration to people that come into the chambers to be honored at the beginning of the meeting, so they can leave and go home to be with their family. We need to show the same respect to our citizens. If they want to come in and say their piece at the beginning of the meeting, they can do so and leave. If they choose to stay and they want to listen to the business, maybe they came in to speak about a pothole in front of their house. Well, they've done that at the beginning of the meeting. Then they hear something on the agenda about a leash law. Maybe they want to speak again at the end of the meeting, I say we allow it. You speak once at the beginning, and you can speak once at the end. If you want to come in late and speak at the end, that's fine. If you want to speak at the beginning and leave, that's fine. If we have to be here till 2:00 AM, then so be it. That is our job, that is what we signed up for. We work for the citizens, we are here to listen to you. So, again, my proposal is five minutes, beginning of the meeting, matters from the public after the invocation and moment of silence, end of the meeting after matters from the city manager, five minutes a person. And we stay as long as it takes to listen to everyone. You can speak once at the beginning and once at the end. And that's what I propose as far as changes. Any thoughts? Counselor Dole?
Well, why don't we make it like eight minutes? Because we've had a few people get cut off at five minutes, so let's pick a number where nobody gets arrested at. Eight, 10 minutes, whatever, whatever works. And in fact, we could put, we could do one at the beginning and one at the end, and we could do another one in the middle for people that had heard enough and wanted to speak. I mean, I'm good with all of that.
I was using the school board as an example, and I understand that the school board deals with the schools and we deal with the city as a whole. However, my experience on the school board, people will come out quicker when it concerns their children than they will with anything with the city, whether it be taxes, a pothole. You will have a lot of people come out when it involves their children, and it never was an issue. We were always out of the meetings in a timely fashion. And I believe opening it up as wide as we possibly can allows the citizens a choice. And they do not feel rushed to come down to say whatever they need to say to the city council members. They can come at the beginning and leave, or again, they can come later and speak at the end.
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor.
Because we're allowing remote participation, I think that helps with folks who have little kids and don't want to be stuck here, you know, because they can, they can Zoom from home. So, so I think that helps a lot with the options on when to speak.
And we definitely have the remote participation as part of it. Vice Mayor Robertson.
And I'll just listen to what you said, I mean, I'll agree to that. I'm more of the five minutes, but five at the beginning, five at the end, remote, everything like that.
Any other thoughts?
I'd like to just doing it at the end, but having five minutes would be great. I mean, I agree to three minutes, just because I just wanted everybody to have the right to say.
To make you happy, Harry.
Yeah. But I mean, y'all, you know, I'll do it any way you want to do it. Pretty easy, but I don't know if we do part of it at the front, but I do think it's important to have it at the end of the meeting.
For me, it's, it's the First Amendment right for the citizens. And I do support the First Amendment, I support the Second Amendment, I support everyone's rights, all of your rights, I support. So it's a First Amendment right of the citizens, and I will always support your freedom of speech.
I agree, what happened in Loudoun County was a travesty, so.
Any other thoughts?
If that is the consensus of council, if, if I could ask your indulgence for a brief recess, and I can go type this up, but if that's what you want to vote on tonight, that's a little bit, a little bit different than changing a word in what's before you. I apologize. But I'd want you to have that in front.
Absolutely. Any other thoughts from council members? Is there a consensus?
I mean, I agree to everything, and then everything else has been talked about, as we said.
I can go with it.
And just to be clear, the five minutes at the beginning of the meeting is after the invocation, that's how it should be worded?
The moment of silence, yes.
Okay.
And then after the city manager, right. All right, so are you going to go upstairs and make some changes?
I'll print you all off copy and clerk.
So we're on a, will ten minutes give you enough time? We're on a ten minute break.
I hope so, okay.
We'll be back in ten minutes.
I apologize. I apologize. Um, I, does that capture the changes, Mayor Oaks, that you were?
Yes.
And I want to thank Mr. Rosenberg for being a proofreader just, just recently.
I missed one error.
Ah.
We'll catch up afterwards.
And.
Small typo.
And I also wanted to let the council know that Mr. Rhodes, the senior planner for the city of Stanton, did want to point out that with this new Matters from the Public at the beginning of the meeting, any public hearings during the regular portion of the meeting, they're normally advertised for 7:30 PM. I think we'll have to change that to a later advertisement time, whether it's 7:45 or 8 o'clock, because with all of the introductory aspects of the meeting, including a new Matters from the Public, it probably, there will not be a public hearing until either 7:45 or 8 o'clock. So again, the normal practice right now is to advertise public hearings for 7:30, but to be fair to the public, in case somebody wants to wait until the public hearing, we'll probably have to advertise later for public hearings.
It's just a matter of changing the time.
Right.
Counselor Holmes.
What it just reads is they can participate in Matters from the Public at the beginning and at the end. So if they had more to say.
Right.
Come on and get on there again.
Right.
Okay. Are there any additional questions or comments?
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor Dole?
I move to adopt amendments to Stanton City Council Procedure Memoranda 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 12, 14, and 15, new Stanton City Council Procedure Memoranda 16 and 17, and an ordinance amending Stanton City Code Section 2 dot 10 dot 120 with an amendment to, uh, whatever that number is.
Four.
Yeah, number four. Uh, changing three minutes to five minutes in line two.
And that's for the original?
Correct.
So there would only be one Matters from the Public, but it would be a five-minute?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second point of clarification?
Sure. Okay. So we get into the fun of Roberts rules. Counselor Dole has made a motion that includes an amendment to Council Procedure Memorandum Number Four. I think the proper way to handle this is to first vote on her proposed amendment to Number Four. And going back to your packet, what Counselor Dole is proposing is just an amendment to go from three minutes to five minutes, but to remain with one Matters from the Public. You would debate and then vote on that amendment first, and then if that amendment is successful or fails, then there would be an opportunity for other amendments of what's in the packet.
All right. Are there any comments? What's counsel's pleasure?
Vote on, uh, me.
We're voting on my amendment to change it from three minutes to five minutes in the original memorandum, number four.
One time at the end of the meeting.
Yes. All that stays the same, just changing three minutes to five minutes.
And we have remote participation?
Right.
Thoughts?
In favor?
Here.
So we should vote? I'm, I'm just curious. Counselor Mead, did you have any thoughts?
I have no thoughts.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, I'm getting.
That's a first.
I'm, I'm blown away, too.
Well, I'll put it this way, none that I choose to share. Okay.
Fair enough. All right. Well, I'm getting a sense that the majority of the council is supporting the five minutes, the one Matters from the Public at the end, um, with the remote participation. Again, I, I believe that we offer every opportunity to the citizens to be heard because it's your First Amendment right. But in the spirit of cooperation, I'll agree to this vote. However, it can be reviewed again in the future and changed if need be. So, any additional comments? Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
And this is, this is just for Counselor Dole's first amendment?
Right.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Do I need to make a motion?
To approve.
With the amended.
With the amended Council Procedure of Number Four.
So Mayor Oaks, I move to adopt amendments to Stanton City Council Procedure Memoranda amended 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 12, 14, and 15, new Stanton City Council Procedure Memoranda 16 and 17, and an ordinance amending Stanton City Code Section 2 dot 10 dot 120 with an amendment to, uh, whatever that number is.
Four.
Yeah, number four.
Uh, changing three minutes to five minutes in line two.
And that's for the original?
Correct.
So there would only be one Matters from the Public, but it would be a five-minute?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second point of clarification?
Sure. Okay. So we get into the fun of Roberts rules. Counselor Dole has made a motion that includes an amendment to Council Procedure Memorandum Number Four. I think the proper way to handle this is to first vote on her proposed amendment to Number Four. And going back to your packet, what Counselor Dole is proposing is just an amendment to go from three minutes to five minutes, but to remain with one Matters from the Public. You would debate and then vote on that amendment first, and then if that amendment is successful or fails, then there would be an opportunity for other amendments of what's in the packet.
All right. Are there any comments? What's counsel's pleasure?
Vote on, uh, me.
We're voting on my amendment to change it from three minutes to five minutes in the original memorandum, number four.
One time at the end of the meeting.
Yes. All that stays the same, just changing three minutes to five minutes.
And we have remote participation?
Right.
Thoughts?
In favor?
Here.
So we should vote? I'm, I'm just curious. Counselor Mead, did you have any thoughts?
I have no thoughts.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, I'm getting.
That's a first.
I'm, I'm blown away, too.
Well, I'll put it this way, none that I choose to share. Okay.
Fair enough. All right. Well, I'm getting a sense that the majority of the council is supporting the five minutes, the one Matters from the Public at the end, um, with the remote participation. Again, I, I believe that we offer every opportunity to the citizens to be heard because it's your First Amendment right. But in the spirit of cooperation, I'll agree to this vote. However, it can be reviewed again in the future and changed if need be. So, any additional comments? Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
And this is, this is just for Counselor Dole's first amendment?
Right.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. And now.
Do I need to make a motion?
To approve.
With the amended.
With the amended Council Procedure of Number Four.
So Mayor Oaks, I move to adopt amendments to Stanton City Council Procedure Memoranda amended 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 12, 14, and 15, new Stanton City Council Procedure Memoranda 16 and 17, and an ordinance amending Stanton City Code Section 2 dot 10 dot 120 with an amendment to, uh, whatever that number is.
Four.
Yeah, number four.
Uh, changing three minutes to five minutes in line two.
And that's for the original?
Correct.
So there would only be one Matters from the Public, but it would be a five-minute?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second point of clarification?
Sure. Okay. So we get into the fun of Roberts rules. Counselor Dole has made a motion that includes an amendment to Council Procedure Memorandum Number Four. I think the proper way to handle this is to first vote on her proposed amendment to Number Four. And going back to your packet, what Counselor Dole is proposing is just an amendment to go from three minutes to five minutes, but to remain with one Matters from the Public. You would debate and then vote on that amendment first, and then if that amendment is successful or fails, then there would be an opportunity for other amendments of what's in the packet.
All right. Are there any comments? What's counsel's pleasure?
Vote on, uh, me.
We're voting on my amendment to change it from three minutes to five minutes in the original memorandum, number four.
One time at the end of the meeting.
Yes. All that stays the same, just changing three minutes to five minutes.
And we have remote participation?
Right.
Thoughts?
In favor?
Here.
So we should vote?
Um, I'm, I'm just curious. Counselor Mead, did you have any thoughts?
I have no thoughts.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, I'm getting.
That's a first.
I'm, I'm blown away, too.
Well, I'll put it this way, none that I choose to share. Okay.
Fair enough. All right. Well, I'm getting a sense that the majority of the council is supporting the five minutes, the one Matters from the Public at the end, um, with the remote participation. Again, I, I believe that we offer every opportunity to the citizens to be heard because it's your First Amendment right. But in the spirit of cooperation, I'll agree to this vote. However, it can be reviewed again in the future and changed if need be. So, any additional comments? Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
And this is, this is just for Counselor Dole's first amendment?
Right.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. And now.
Do I need to make a motion?
To approve.
With the amended.
With the amended Council Procedure of Number Four.
So Mayor Oaks, I move to adopt amendments to Stanton City Council Procedure Memoranda amended 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 12, 14, and 15, new Stanton City Council Procedure Memoranda 16 and 17, and an ordinance amending Stanton City Code Section 2 dot 10 dot 120.
We have a motion on the floor by Counselor Dole. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor Darby?
I second that.
Right. Any further discussion?
Yes, I, I do have something to say now.
Counselor Mead?
Um, this issue of public participation has been on the table since April 8. It could have been fixed at the very next meeting. We could have been allowing public participation via the Zoom platform and public comments via the Zoom platform since then. But this has somehow become a straw man for taking us through this lengthy procedure of going through city council memoranda one by one, these discussions, these three meetings, these hours.
Okay, we're back in session. Mr. Blair?
Yes. Apologies, but I felt like with the substantive changes made, we needed a hard copy in front of all the councilors.
Thank you.
You look at what I have just written up. The second paragraph of the document, starting at line 12. City Council also has two items on its regular meeting agenda entitled Matters from the Public, which first occurs after the invocation moment of silence portion of the regular meeting and also occurs after the matters from the city manager portion of the regular meeting. So that would reflect there would be two matters from the public portions of meeting. On, starting on line 83, you'll see I took one, two, and three and condensed them into one and two. And the one remains the same, but two now reads. No individuals shall speak more than twice at Matters from the Public at each regular council meeting. An individual who elects to speak twice at Matters from the Public shall speak once at the initial Matters from the Public portion of the meeting, following the invocation moment of silence, and once at the second Matters from the Public portion of the meeting, following Matters from the City Manager. An individual's comments during each Matters from the Public portion of the meeting shall be limited to five minutes. Does that capture the changes, Mayor Oaks, that you were?
Yes.
And I want to thank Mr. Rosenberg for being a proofreader just recently.
I missed one error.
Ah.
We'll catch up afterwards. Small typo.
And I also wanted to let the council know that Mr. Rhodes, the senior planner for the city of Stanton, did want to point out that with this new Matters from the Public at the beginning of the meeting, any public hearings during the regular portion of the meeting, they're normally advertised for 7:30 PM. Think we'll have to change that to a later advertisement time, whether it's 7:45 or 8 o'clock, because with all of the introductory aspects of the meeting, including a new Matters from the Public, it probably, there will not be a public hearing until either 7:45 or 8 o'clock. So again, the normal practice right now is to advertise public hearings for 7:30, but to be fair to the public, in case somebody wants to wait until the public hearing, we'll probably have to advertise later for public hearings.
It's just a matter of changing the time.
Right.
Counselor Holmes?
What it just reads is they can participate in Matters from the Public at the beginning and at the end. So if they had more to say, come on and get on there again.
Right.
Okay. Are there any additional questions or comments?
Mayor Oaks?
Counselor Dole?
I move to adopt amendments to Stanton City Council Procedure Memoranda 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 12, 14, and 15, new Stanton City Council Procedure Memoranda 16 and 17, and an ordinance amending Stanton City Code Section 2 dot 10 dot 120 with an amendment to whatever that number is.
Four.
Yeah, number four.
Changing three minutes to five minutes in line two.
And that's for the original?
Correct.
So there would only be one Matters from the Public, but it would be a five minute?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion on the floor and we have a second point of clarification.
Sure. Okay. So we get into the fun of Roberts rules. Counselor Dole has made a motion that includes an amendment to Council Procedure Memorandum Number Four. I think the proper way to handle this is to first vote on her proposed amendment to Number Four. And going back to your packet, what Counselor Dole is proposing is just an amendment to go from three minutes to five minutes, but to remain with one Matters from the Public. You would debate and then vote on that amendment first. And then if that amendment is successful or fails, then there would be an opportunity for other amendments of what's in the packet.
All right. Are there any comments? What's counsel's pleasure?
Vote on me.
We're voting on my amendment to change it from three minutes to five minutes in the original memorandum, number four.
One time at the end of the meeting.
Yes. All that stays the same, just changing three minutes to five minutes.
And we have remote participation.
Right.
Thoughts?
In favor?
Here.
So we should vote?
I'm just curious, Counselor Mead, did you have any thoughts?
I have no thoughts.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, I'm getting-
That's a first. Well, I'll put it this way, none that I choose to share. Okay.
Fair enough. All right. Well, I'm getting a sense that the majority of the council is supporting the five minutes, the one Matters from the Public at the end with the remote participation. Again, I believe that we offer every opportunity to the citizens to be heard, because it's your First Amendment right. But in the spirit of cooperation, I'll agree to this vote. However, it can be reviewed again in the future and changed if need be. So any additional comments? Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
And this is, this is just for Counselor Dole's first amendment?
Right.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. And now-
Do I need to make a motion?
To approve-
With the amended-
With the amended Council Procedure of Number Four.
So Mayor Oaks, I move to adopt amendments to Stanton City Council Procedure Memoranda amended 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 12, 14, and 15, new Stanton City Council Procedure Memoranda 16 and 17, and an ordinance amending Stanton City Code Section 2 dot 10 dot 120.
We have a motion on the floor by Counselor Dole. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks?
Counselor Darby?
I second that.
Right. Any further discussion?
Yes, I do have something to say now.
Counselor Mead?
This issue of public participation has been on the table since April 8. It could have been fixed at the very next meeting. We could have been allowing public participation via the Zoom platform and public comments via the Zoom platform since then. But this has somehow become a straw man for taking us through this lengthy procedure of going through City Council Memoranda, one by one, these discussions, these three meetings, these hours that we've gone through this process. So am I happy now that we have public participation via the Zoom platform during City Council meetings? You bet I am. And I want to thank, and I would like you to stand, those of you who have been silenced, please stand, because I want to recognize you, because I believe, I believe that you are not, you are not silenced and you've been heard. And I want to thank each and every one of you for your efforts at these meetings. I know it has been challenging. I know it's tough to stand in the hallway and protest. I'm sure you got disapproval from a variety of people, but thank you, because it made a difference. You made a difference. I appreciate it.
Okay. And again, we appreciate the citizens speaking up. Your First Amendment rights should always be protected, and we do work for the citizens. And in light of recent events, this is more important than ever. So we thank you for your patience, and it was certainly worthy of a discussion as well as a consideration. With that, Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Blair? That takes us to the next item, which is Item C, a consideration of municipal elections in November.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Blair will present this item as well.
Welcome back.
Thank you so much, Mayor Oaks and council. I know the evening is starting to get late. We went over this at the work session. Are there any additional questions about this ordinance?
Any additional questions or comments by council members?
Yes, Mayor Oaks?
Counselor Dole?
There's not much to talk about. I mean, the state says this is what you got to do, so that's what we've got to do.
Madam Mayor?
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I move that council adopt an ordinance amending Stanton City Code Chapter 2.10, City Council, to add a new section, 2.10 dot 010, City Council and School Board Elections, and to recodify the subsequent sections within Chapter 2.10 of Title II Administration.
Have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Holmes is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. The next, thank you, thank you. The next item is Item D, consideration of resolution ending the local emergency declared March 16, 2020. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. This is the last remaining action that remains in effect related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Council members and the public will recall that previously, there was an effect, an uncodified emergency ordinance, which expired in accordance with its terms earlier in the year. And this local declaration, which was made by me administratively in March of last year and subsequently ratified by City Council, remains in effect presently. The, as I noted during the work session, the state's declaration of emergency will be permitted to expire at the end of this month, and we believe it's appropriate, at the same time, to terminate the locally declared emergency. That termination requires an action of council. You have before you this evening, for your consideration, a resolution which will have the effect of terminating the local declaration of emergency, also effective as of June 30, 2021. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions from Mr. Rosenberg?
Mayor Oaks?
Counselor Dole?
What do we do with the state law that says you can't wear a mask once the emergency orders gone? I know some localities, they've had a statement from their law enforcement head or the Commonwealth Attorney saying, we're not going to prosecute anybody. So I just wondered if we were going to do something like that or what?
It's not an issue that we've considered at this point. I know that the governor's office has made mention of the fact that it's within the discretion of the law enforcement agency in each locality. And I certainly can have a conversation with Jeff Gaines in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and Chief Williams about, you know, whether it, whether it makes sense for some sort of a statement to be issued here locally.
Thanks. I'd just soon not get a record this late in life.
All right. Are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Claffey?
I move to adopt the proposed resolution to end the local emergency declared March 16, 2020 in the city of Stanton on June 30, 2021.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor?
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I'll second that motion.
All right. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. The next item is Matters from the City Manager. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, two items. First, let me remind council and the public that City Council has previously acted to cancel its regular meeting scheduled for July 8 of 2021, so there will be no meeting on that date. Council's next meeting is on July 22, 2021. And secondly, with your vote this evening on your amended Council Procedure Memoranda, the remote participation on the Zoom platform is immediately in effect. And so the following item on the agenda is Matters from the Public, and if the public is interested, members of the public who are interested in participating remotely will find instructions posted on the City Council website, on the city's webpage, and that's www.stanton.v.a.us backslash council. So those instructions are available now on that webpage, if there are members of the public who wish to participate remotely this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to Matters from the Public. I'm going to read the rules, then we will hear from the public. Matters from the Public. This part of the City Council's agenda is entitled Matters from the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. Before we begin, I'd like to share five basic ground rules that we ask you to respect as you make your remarks. One, please come to the podium, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. I will let you know when you've reached your five minutes. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. If you continue to speak, I will ask you to step away from the podium. If you continue to speak after I inform you that you have exceeded your time limit, I will ask you again to please stop, to please stop speaking and step away from the podium. If you still continue to speak, you may be charged with disorderly conduct under Virginia Code Section 18.2 dash 415A2. Number two, this is a time for us as City Council simply to listen to your remarks. In an effort to encourage and maintain orderly conduct, we will not engage in give-and-take debate. If you seek information, you may mention it during your remarks, and the city manager or his staff may get in touch with you in the days ahead. Three, we ask that you direct your comments to council as a whole and not to identify members of council or to identify employees of the city. If you want to take up an issue with an individual member of council or an employee, please speak with us before or after the meeting. We are also accessible by phone, email, or mail. Again, we ask that you direct your comments to the council as a whole. Four, we expect every speaker to be civil and courteous. Using profanity, making personal attacks on an individual unrelated to the performance of their duties on behalf of the city of Stanton, and doing anything that is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be tolerated. Five, finally, as the presiding officer, it is my duty to remind you that if you choose not to abide by these ground rules, I may find that you are out of order and will ask you to withdraw from the podium. We certainly do not want to reach that point and even beyond, so we respectfully ask for your full cooperation in observing these guidelines. If you wish, you may obtain a copy of the ground rules from our clerk of council, Mrs. Zinni. And now, we welcome all speakers. The podium is now available for Matters from the Public. And what we'll do is we'll alternate back and forth. Ms. Zinni will alternate back and forth. And it's my understanding that on all the monitors, it has the clock, so everybody can see. All right. With that, I'll start with anyone from the audience.
Hi, Nits Narduzzi, South Jefferson Street. Thank you, Counselor Mead, for bringing to council the opportunity to honor both our Black community and the LGBTQ community, of which I am a proud member, by reaching out to them to begin the process of drafting proclamations to recognize their good works and their right to be celebrated equitably. I expect to see further efforts from the council at large to promote diversity and inclusion, so that these proclamations will not just be performative, but will be followed by real tangible outcomes through policies and changes that will also provide for justice on their behalf. The rest of what I have to say, I have to scrap, because I was very surprised at the turn of events this evening. So I just wanted to reiterate that I've always said that I respond in kind to your actions. And so I will thank you for keeping it at five minutes. It's the only time that I have to address you, to engage with you, and to engage with the rest of my community. So I do appreciate that. But I also don't want to look over the fact that you were responsible for the problem in the first place. So this was something that didn't need to happen, had you been willing to listen to us from the beginning. So I just want you to keep that in mind as you move forward, that I only seem so oppositional and aggressive to you, because you are so defensive at whatever I have to say. I had the opportunity to speak with Counselor Claffey earlier this week. Thank you for making that happen. I appreciated the fact that I felt like you did hear me and you respected me, even though we did have some disagreements. I have not had that opportunity offered to me from the rest of you. When I say the rest of you, I mean the majority four. So I encourage all of you, Counselor Darby, Mayor Oaks, and Vice Mayor Robertson, to reach out to me to have one-on-one conversations, so that we can avoid this type of, which was a huge drain emotionally, physically, mentally, on our whole community, and fostered such ill will between us. And that responsibility actually lies with you. I want you to remember that.
Thank you. Now we'll take a caller.
I do not currently have anyone with their hand raised.
Okay. All right. Anyone else from the audience? Any? Welcome.
Joanne Tigert, 913 North Augusta Street. Please come by, use my little free library, enjoy my flowers. My commercial's over. I just want to say I'm very surprised and pleasantly surprised, and I don't know how the good fairy came to you all and told you that you all do work for us, and you listen to us, and it took a while and a lot of effort on a lot of parts, and maybe something else happened, the good fairy, as I mentioned before. But thank you very much for listening, because we are a community that we all love and are a part of. And thanks for listening. And we're not going to all disappear just because this situation is resolved. We're still going to be here. Maybe not every meeting, but we're still going to be here. We're still, we still love Stanton. Thanks.
Thank you. Any callers?
I do not have anyone with their hand raised.
Okay. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak? Hey, welcome.
Allison Profeta, I live at Ferrier Court in Stanton. I'm here to remind everyone that Mark Robertson is afraid of a single Black man who spent weeks peacefully sitting outside of a hotel in protest of its name, because that man spoke at Matters in the Public and said that he would also protest outside of the homes of council members, something he is well within his rights to do, because council continuously ignored his pleas for justice. But tonight, he calls what happened at a Loudoun County School Board meeting a travesty. So I want to make sure everybody understands that he's now indicated he's cool with violence and riots within these council chambers, and that to vote to end a meeting that has continuous interruptions that include, but aren't limited to, attendees singing, shouting, screaming, cursing, and interruptions would be, as he said tonight, a travesty. Please note that you guys went from trying to limit public comments during Matters in the Public to expanding them because of recent events, which includes a group of people in Loudoun County who decided to act like petulant, violent D-bags over the prospect of LGBTQ students being treated equitably, and that the idea of students there being taught theory that is not being taught there, has never been taught there, will not be taught there, and is not taught in any public school in this country, because it's law school level theory. So in light of recent events, let's be real clear that we recognize your virtue signaling to a cowardly racist faction of our society, all of whom live in fear of Americans truly understanding that racism is not an action, but a series of systems that are oppressive and inequitable. And because understanding and education often inspire action that will dismantle those systems, we will likely continue to see violence, because people like that quake at the idea that someday those systems will no longer be in place, and their whiteness won't afford them the privilege they've come to find so comfortable. So thank you for protecting our First Amendment rights, even if while doing so, you continue to demonstrate where your values lie.
Thank you. No callers?
I do have one individual with their hand raised.
Okay.
Ms. Soral, are you there?
Yes, thank you. I would just like to take the opportunity for council members responding during COVID to any questions or concerns, typically questions, not concerns, that I've had during this last 15 months of what seems like eternity. And I do appreciate that our council is working together, and I think we're all moving forward to unite Stanton as the wonderful city that it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Welcome.
Yvonne Wilson, 2017 First Street. I wanted to address the council to thank you for keeping it at the five-minute mark, because I always have a lot to say, very passionately. I did want to make a couple of statements on, you know, a few things that were said by Matters of the Public. I understand that there are a lot of us citizens who feel that they have been silenced. And the council has listened to the citizens, and I again thank them for that. But I still get the feeling that there is still some animosity and dissatisfaction. Again, we're living in an emotional time right now, and the situation in Loudoun is tragic. What is sad, however, is that everybody is touting how marginalized a certain group of people are. And as I said at the last meeting, I am probably the most marginalized group in this building. I went to support the Augusta County Police Department or Sheriff's Department yesterday, and I had my own people call me Uncle Tom, Sambo, Jigaboo, from my own race, to my face. and I had my own people call me Uncle Tom, Sambo, Jigaboo, from my own race, to my face. My blackness gets questioned by a certain side of the political spectrum just because I don't toe a certain party line that people think that I should toe. Every last one of you that have been protesting against the shortening of the minutes, you have never been called out your name, you've never had your race questioned, you've never had the validity of your military service questioned, you've never been told that you don't belong, you've never been told that you're one of us. I don't know anybody here who has been told to their face that their white card privileges are gone, but I get told that my black card has been revoked because I express a certain ideology and a certain political alignment that is not with the mainstream. So please understand that while you did get your five minutes and that the council is honoring your right to speak, be sure that you also honor others outside of the council room. Don't ask for an audience to listen to your side while you disparage others on Facebook, Twitter, TikTok, Gmail, or other social media platforms. Letters to the editor. Because that is the ultimate virtue signal. Stanton citizens won today for having their First Amendment honored, but every time you contradict that in your personal discourse with others who don't agree with you, you spit in the face of it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right. Any other callers?
I do have a caller with their hand raised. If you could, please state your name and the street in which you live on.
Yes, hello, this is Brad Slougham. I live on West Johnson Street. I'm just calling because I moved here recently and I was very confused by the changes in the online accessibility of the council meetings and seeing the process that played out here tonight to make the meetings, or keep the meetings more accessible and allow a lot of time for public comment, I think is very important and actually resulted in me getting off the couch and going to my computer to take the time to thank you for going through this procedure. I wasn't sure how it would play out, and I decided to tune in and see what the progress was. And I'm glad for this outcome and just wanted to say thanks for the opportunity to exercise the right to be heard. So thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Any other callers?
I do not have anyone with their hands raised.
Okay. With that, I will now call the June 24th, 2021 meeting adjourned.